Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is Wednesday, February 7th at 3:02 in the afternoon. This is Mayor City of Tallahassee. I'd like to call this meeting into order and welcome everybody here. Ms. Barber, great to see you. We're going to have a wonderful meeting. Appreciate you walking us through as the acting city manager in the absence of Mr. Goodwell, he is away on business.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to recognize Pastor Michael Emmanuel Bell, Jr., of the New Mount Zion AME Church, who will be providing our invocation. Pastor Bell, thank you for joining us. Ladies and gentlemen, will you please rise?
Let us pray. Dear Father God, we come before you, God, just thanking you for this day. Thank you, God, for the opportunity to meet, for the development of your city. Now, we ask that you come in the midst of this meeting, God. Allow your spirit to flow, your spirit of wisdom, your spirit of understanding, your spirit of compassion. Now, we ask in the name of Jesus that you give understanding and leadership to the leadership of Tallahassee. Direct their path, show them exactly what they need to do, and we thank you, God, for what's going to take place. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor Bell, thank you so much and welcome once again to Tallahassee community. It's great to see you, sir. We have a great meeting today. We'll make sure we spend as much time as we need on all the items. We do not have a regularly scheduled public hearing, so we will just go until we are done today. Madam Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do. Item number 801 has been pulled and pulled from consent and renumbered as 901. And item number 8.03 has been pulled and renumbered as item number 902.
All right, so two items have been pulled off the consent agenda, leaving one item on consent. Any questions? All right, seeing none. Certainly do appreciate it. Colleagues, if y'all would like to join me down for some presentations. So ladies and gentlemen, we have four wonderful presentations and recognitions to do today. First and foremost, I would like to invite Juanita Gaston, Martina Taylor, all of our friends with the Tallahassee African American Genealogical Society. Please come join us down front, and I would like to turn the podium over to the Mayor Pro Tem Curtis Richardson.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. And good afternoon, ladies. Y'all, I'm glad y'all stayed. That's a little inside joke there, y'all. But it is my honor and pleasure to present this proclamation this afternoon on behalf of the mayor and city commission and the city manager and city of Tallahassee. This is a very special proclamation, of course, at this very special time of the year, particularly for those of us in the African American community. The proclamation reads, whereas the contributions of African Americans have helped shape and mold the rich history of our nation, and whereas African American History Week, celebrated in February, was created in 1926 in the United States by historian Carter G. Woodson, and whereas Black History Month was first recognized by President Gerald Ford in 1976, whereas such knowledge can strengthen the insight of our community regarding issues of civil rights, the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barrier of equality for African Americans and the struggles against racial discrimination. And whereas the African American Genealogical Society, represented here this afternoon and here, provide resources for historical and genealogical studies and encourage and assist members of the wider community in documenting and sharing their family history. And whereas the African American Genealogical Society will be hosting a series of events during Tallahassee's bicentennial year to recognize, honor, and celebrate local families. Now therefore, I, and this is on behalf of the mayor, John E. Daley, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize February as Black History Month and witness whereof, the mayor has signed his name on this day, February 7th, 2024. And we will ask, who's going to...
There are a lot of incredible events celebrating in February, so do encourage everybody to come out.
Okay, all right.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor and privilege to ask Ryan Lind, Tasha
Here we are. Let's give them a hand.
I just want to say on behalf of the Tallahassee African American Genealogical Society,
Weinstein, and Kim Kelling of WFSU to please come forward, and I'd like to turn the podium over now to my colleague Commissioner Diane Williams Cox for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
we're delighted and honored to accept this today. We've been working since 2012 trying to tell the story of African Americans in Leon County
Gold Knows. All right. Well, we always hear about that with sports, but you all are the voices, right?
and elsewhere, and so we are delighted here today to accept this proclamation.
All right. One of the voices. From the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation, whereas February 17th, 2024,
We want to invite you to look at the Tallahassee Bicentennial website, and you'll see additional
has been designated by the city of Tallahassee, Be My Neighbor Day, a nationwide movement
programs that we'll be offering this year. We're partnering with a number of organizations, and we think we have a very exciting program
celebrating the legacy of Mr. Rogers' neighborhood and his simple signature question, "Won't
to share with you, so we hope that you will come out and join us.
you be my neighbor?"
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And whereas WFSU Public Media, Daniel Tiger, and the city of Tallahassee welcomes a new
Can we get a picture?
generation of children and families to our neighborhood with a special event. And whereas WFSU Public Media has been providing television excellence to our community for more than 64 years, WFSU has worked tirelessly to provide free educational programs for educators, parents, and children. WFSU is proud to offer an opportunity where we can explore our community and continue learning in new ways. And whereas the legacy of Fred Rogers and Daniel Tiger reaches thousands of our youngest citizens daily with timeless lessons reflecting the best in all of us, Daniel alone with our youngest community members learns that it feels good to be neighborly and that one kind act can lead to many. The city of Tallahassee and community partners all contribute to good deeds that start a chain reaction of kindness around the neighborhood. And whereas during Be My Neighbor Day, with generous support from Florida Prepaid, friends from all over our community will share stories, crafts, and activities, bringing the best of our city's history, culture, arts, and environment. And whereas by partnering with local organizations like WFSU Public Media, Florida Prepaid, Children's Services Council, Florida After School, Florida Center for Reading Research, Lemoine Arts Center, Leroy Collins Leon Library, Museum of Florida History, Southern Shakespeare Company, the Grove Museum, the city of Tallahassee, and others can help to promote the awareness of programs and services, including quality exhibits and fun hands-on activities for young children and their families throughout the year. And whereas the Tallahassee City Commission believes in the Be My Neighbor Day message, do something nice for your neighbor. Do something nice for your friend. Now therefore, I, John E. Daley, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby proclaim February 17th, 2024 as Be My Neighbor Day. And he has affixed his signature. Will you be my neighbor?
We are so excited at WFSU to be once again hosting Be My Neighbor Day. It's a legacy event on the shoulders of Mr. Rogers, who we all feel is a beloved saint to our children and families throughout the community. You can learn more about Be My Neighbor Day, which is Saturday, February 17th, at WFSU from 9 to 3, where you can visit with Daniel Tiger and learn ways to be kind. I think we can all use a little more kindness in our lives, so I hope you'll join us in spreading kindness on February 17th. Thank you.
By the way, if you've never been out to this event, it's pretty amazing. I've done it a couple of times, Kim. It's like having Taylor Swift come to town. People come out of the woodwork to come meet Daniel Tiger and hang out with him. He is a rock star, and it is a lot of fun to see the excitement. So I know you're going to have a wonderful event. I know you're going to have a wonderful event. I'm going to flip-flop the last two. I would like to ask Amy Zubelley, the executive director of the Florida Municipal Electric Association, to please come forward for a special presentation. Amy, it's great to see you.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Welcome back to chambers.
Thanks so much. Mayor Commissioners, members of the community, good afternoon. Thanks so much for having me here today. As Mayor Daley mentioned, I'm Amy Zubelley. I'm executive director of the Florida Municipal Electric Association, which is the statewide trade association representing Florida's 33 public power communities like the city of Tallahassee. And while I'm also resident of Tallahassee, of this great community, and while I don't pick favors amongst my members, I will say I'm a little partial to the city of Tallahassee and the great electric utility and the great work that they do for our community and the members and the customers that we serve. One of FMEA's primary roles and responsibilities is that of mutual aid coordination. So whether it is a bad afternoon thunderstorm or a massive-scale hurricane, FMEA is here and ready to help arrange crews to come in and assist the utility to get power back on for our customers as quickly and as safely as possible. Sometimes those crews come as nearby as Gainesville and Jacksonville, and sometimes they come as far away as Massachusetts and Minnesota, and I think we've had all of the above in this city before for different occasions. And just as likewise, when other states or communities are in need, we help coordinate crews to send out to help other states get their power back on as well. And so mutual aid is something that I am incredibly passionate about, and every year FMEA bestows a Restoring Community Award to members, which recognizes public power utilities for their exemplary power restoration efforts for their own communities and for providing or receiving mutual aid following significant weather events or when fellow public power communities were in extra need of assistance. And so because my passion is so strong for mutual aid, I think this is my favorite award that our association gives out every year, although I will say if there's a year that we have zero recipients, that would be okay, too. So Tallahassee, I think, had two mutual aid events in 2023. One was a bad storm that came through in June. It wasn't a hurricane. It wasn't a tropical storm. It was an unnamed storm. And then there was Hurricane Adalia. And the Tallahassee area was extremely fortunate of the path that Adalia took, but we still did suffer some pretty significant impacts. And I would say that we are all extremely fortunate to have a great utility like the city of Tallahassee's electric utility and the great work that these guys do, because power was restored to our community in less than two days. And not only that, but as soon as those guys were done, there are still a lot of communities and utilities just east of us that were a lot worse, and they offered up their crews to go and help turn the lights back on for those communities as well, because we all know how important electricity is. And as soon as we can get the power back on for other people, the sooner we can bring normalcy back into some lives or otherwise devastated. So, you know, a lot of people say that the primary job of an electric utility is to keep the lights on and the beer cold, and while that is certainly important, I'd like to say that there's a lot of other important things as well. And so congratulations to the city of Tallahassee and the electric utility for doing just that, but so much more for our community and for our customers that we serve as well.
Wonderful. Tony, come on.
Thank you, Amy. Mayor Commissioners, this is...
Your partner?
Yeah. Got a chance to see it. Thank you. So this is truly the, probably what, I agree with Amy, this is the best award that we get every year. Honestly, hopefully one year we don't have to get it. It means we don't have to go help folks, or we don't need help. But she said it right. These guys, it's their passion as well, mutual aid, the work they do regularly in preparing for our community whenever we need, whenever we have our needs, they're always ready to do the work here locally, but they're just as ready to go out and help out in any of our neighboring communities. They're ready to leave their families, leave for a couple days at a time, a couple weeks at a time, whatever is necessary. And that's reflected then in the help that we get when we reach out to Amy and her staff if we have a storm coming our way. We're never in lack of getting help, and it's because of the help that our guys provide on a regular basis. I would like to add one more thing is, you know, we always get recognition and great recognition of the work that our linemen do, but when we go out on mutual aid, it takes a team effort, and we always have fleet support, another city department, they go with us to ensure that our equipment's operating, working, so that we always have a mechanic who leaves his family, his home for however long is necessary. They're always ready, willing, and able to go, so our mutual aid efforts are a team opportunity within the city that makes me even prouder to be working here. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, all of the men and women of the Tallahassee Fire Department that are here today, please We'll shake now or later. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please stand. Before I officially turn it over to Chief Sanders, it is my honor and my privilege to present to you Captain Alice Allen Willis, Jr., the Florida Career Firefighter of the Year for the state of Florida.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a great day for the Tallahassee Fire Department. I am extremely excited about the award that Captain Willis received. Captain Willis has been with the Tallahassee Fire Department for over 21 years, and he's worked his way through the organization, and now his responsibilities are special operations. He has been an instrumental part in multiple deployments across this state for Florida Task Force Seven, representing this county and representing this region within the state of Florida. He also has committee roles or committee positions at the state level, where he is the Florida Association of Search and Rescue Chair across the entire state. He is the Secretary for Domestic Security Task Force. He also oversees Daley. I don't know how he gets anything done, because he's so busy working for us on special ops. He's over urban search and rescue hazardous materials and every tactical responsibility at our airport fire station. So if you would join me in recognizing Captain Allen Willis, we are super excited and proud
I greatly appreciate the recognition here at this ceremony and what the CFO put on, Jimmy Patronas, at the state senate chambers recently, just a little over a week ago, with Director Joanne Rice from the state fire marshal's office. None of this would be possible without the leadership that we have right here within our city, within our command staff, within the fire and rescue business here at the city of Tallahassee. This is a direct reflection of the great product that our fire department puts out, and I'm happy to receive it, although sometimes you feel like you're unworthy of something like that, but that's just a great reward, and I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
You're worthy.
All right, Chief? I'm good. How are you? Tell Captain Davis I said congratulations. I was trying to get his attention.
What a wonderful way to start off, start off the meeting today. All right, Madam Manager, do we have any announcements to come before the city commission this afternoon?
No, Mr. Mayor, we don't.
Have any appearances by other governmental entities come before us?
No, sir, we don't.
Okay, so 801 and 803 have been pulled. We are on consent agenda 8.02. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on 802?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. Any motions for consent?
Move acceptance of consent agenda.
Commissioner Williams Cox has properly moved the consent agenda, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We are now on item 9.01. Madam Manager.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, this item seeks your approval to extend the contract for pipeline capacity with the Florida Gas Transmission Company. Henry Gaynor with our electric utility is here from Energy Supply to answer any questions you may have about the item. This item was pulled by Commissioner Matlow.
Excellent. Commissioner Matlow, I'll come to you in a second. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Can we get a presentation on a brief overview of the item?
Sure, absolutely. Full presentation. Gentlemen, thanks again for being with us.
Mayors, city commissioners, deputy city managers, it's an honor for me to be here today. I'm Henry Gaynor, Assistant General Manager for Energy Supplies Division in the Electric and Gas Department. I'm requesting your approval to extend the current agreement with Florida Gas Transmission, FGDT, for delivering gas to the city of Tallahassee. Current agreement is set to expire next year in February, and this extension would cover a quarter of the gas delivery for the next 10 years. As you may know, we purchase gas through various energy suppliers that have contracts with FGDT and Southern Natural to deliver the gas to the city. FGDT is responsible for a large percentage of the gas delivery, while Southern Natural provides a very small amount. About 90% of the gas that we receive is used in our generating stations to convert power to meet the city electric demand. That's important to know. While roughly about 10% of the gas goes to our gas division for supplying business users, and a very small amount go to individual homes. During the winter and summer month, electricity demand is typically higher, and the delivery of gas during this time is critical. Without this gas supply, we would have to purchase the power on the open market to meet the demand. Unfortunately, this typically three to four times higher than the power we can generate. If we cannot purchase the power on the open market, we would have to burn our emergency diesel to generate the demand, to generate the power. This is typically seven to eight times more costly than the natural gas. Just as a reminder, we haven't increased our gas transportation capacity since 2010. However, our customer base had grown roughly 25% during this time. This is an accident, but rather a result of good management, practice, and upgrading our facility to a much more efficient fleet. The city also implemented energy conservation programs that have been successful. In addition, we have added solar farm, and that helped control our gas uses. Therefore, I respectfully request your authorization to renew this contract with FGDT to minimize power interruption during critical times and maintain our low cost to generate power to meet the city electric demand. Thank you for your consideration.
Excellent. Thank you. Let me get, we do have one public comment. Let's go to public comment, and I'll come back to you in just a second, Commissioner Matlow. Thank you very much. Our public speaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Our speaker is Randy Dinker, and speakers will speak from where Mr. Gaynor is. You'll have three minutes for remarks. I'll give you a heads up when you're at two and a half minutes.
Great. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. Randy Dinker, 552 East Georgia Street, Tallahassee. First of all, this should never have been on the consent agenda. This is something really important. They're asking you to do a 10-year contract and spend $4 million of the public's money, so this is important. I feel like the way that this was presented on the agenda has done a disservice to you commissioners, because it was done in terms of pros and cons. They said the pros, and they didn't say anything about whether there might be alternatives. They presented it as if this is the only way that you can proceed, and there is no other. And then the cons, they said none. And I feel like that was a bit misleading, because there are definitely cons, as we know, with using fossil fuels at a time when we're trying to achieve decarbonization as a city. There's tremendous environmental impacts from continuing to use natural gas. There are health concerns to citizens exposed to it, and I think that before you approve a contract of this size and this expense, that it behooves you to find out, what are their possible alternatives? Now, if there are no alternatives, that's one thing, but you haven't been presented with those possible alternatives. Are there viable alternatives? I think before you spend this much money and make this commitment, that it's a good idea to ask staff or an energy consultant to tell you, what are the possible viable alternatives to this? Because if there are better environmental alternatives, then that's something that should be explored. So before you vote on this, I'm asking you to shelve this for a little while and ask them to bring you back an analysis as to what alternatives to this might exist, because if there are viable alternatives, that information should be presented to you, and you should have an opportunity to weigh the pros and cons of going one way or the other. So, you know, we're limbing...
Secondly, I was very concerned about the timing of this proposal. This was a 10-year contract, and the agenda item, it says a renewal contract needs to be executed essentially in about three weeks. You know, if city management has known for 10 years that this would need to come up for conversation, they've really attempted to tie our hands with a three-week window to even have any conversation that's not just a blanket approval. So if we wanted to step back and have further conversations about how to do this properly, you know, if we know we have a 10-year contract coming out, we need, two years before that comes up, we need to be discussing, you know, what that renewal will look like, not three weeks before there's a critical deadline. And on that deadline, what is, is that in the previous contract that it has to be in place a year in advance?
Will you come back and share again the terms of the contract and the need?
Yes, the contract 3036, the term date is up to February 28 of 2025, and so we have a fairly good window to extend this. And it's important to note that this $4 million a year is just a small fraction of the amount that we spend on gas in the Energy Supplies Division. It's roughly around $116 million a year, sort of our budget. So this is just for transportation costs only.
Okay, and Madam City Manager, for clarification, because what he said is inconsistent with what the agenda item says, which is this contract is up for a 10-year extension and needs to be in place one year before this scheduled expiration on February 28, 2025. So I read that as we need to have this contract in place February 28 of this month. Is that accurate?
Madam Attorney. Henry, let's have, let's carry on the conversation while you're up here. It was brought up, do we have any other alternatives at this point? It's not like you've just kind of pulled this out of thin air. Tell me about the thought process of where we are and why we are here, please.
Yeah, just a little bit of background for me. I've been in this business for roughly 38 years now. Been through nuclear, I've been through biomass, I've been through coaching, rating facility, combined cycle, supercritical, black liquor recovery boilers. I've been in this business for a very, very long time. The city have done such a tremendous job in being able to pick the right form of energy and stuck through all this year, while people went through all the iteration that I have mentioned to finally get down to the use of natural gas. And hopefully, in the year of 2035, we'd be on to something else other than natural gas. But as you're aware, most of the industry now is shutting down coal and use natural gas as a transition. So natural gas fuel is an appropriate fuel for use at this particular time and this particular environment, and especially with a resource fully available for us from Texas all the way to the City of Tallahassee. So that's a background. So just because I stand up here and request for that, that request is based through years and years of experience, and that request is based on hundreds of years of service from the City of Tallahassee. So the decision is not light in any way.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Madam Attorney, Commissioner Matlow had the question on contract. I think we're still researching it down here, Commissioner Matlow.
Commissioner, I actually would defer to Henry on it. The attachment to the agenda item is the contract that is intended to be signed as opposed to the one that I think is about to expire, so I think they may be able to hear.
Yeah, and David, we'll ask David to respond to that. The question, I believe, is whether or not it requires a renewal one year in advance of the expiration of the contract.
Yes, thank you for the question. My name is David Ging, Manager of Energy Services. So the pipeline needs to know a year in advance that we're going to renew this contract. If we don't renew this contract a year in advance, then they won't have the opportunity to release the volumes to other folks to grab those volumes. So if we don't renew it, they put it out, they post it out, and then other users throughout the state would have the opportunity to take our capacity. That's why they need the planning time.
Thank you. Commissioner Matlow?
Yeah, I mean, so back to the initial point I was making, and whether we needed a year in advance or we had more time, is my underlying concern. As a City Commission, we shouldn't be, have a three-week window to make a $4 million decision, because what I would like to see is I would like to see there's four contracts that are staggered, to see them all come back to the City Commission for an update, so we can see the timeframe that those expire. So as we're looking to the future of our goal of reducing our natural gas usage, and it may not be, this may be completely necessary, but it's given us a very short window on consent to review it and think out the implications for both our energy goals and the implications to the utility if we didn't pass it today. It was mentioned, you know, some of the alternatives would be buying on the open market and diesel, and, you know, I don't have enough time to pull this off and really get all the information I need, and I would just ask city management to anticipate these concerns in the future and give us more time when these decisions come back. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'm here to tell you the two options that you just mentioned. Buying on the open market is going to cost so much more than locking this in, and there is no way, Commissioner, you're going to get me to agree that we need to buy, burn diesel on a regular basis. I think this is a smart way to go. There is a reason why we are the number one public utility in the nation, peer reviewed. There is a reason why people look at the City of Tallahassee for energy efficiency. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, but if we were, we would have surpassed the Kyoto Protocol and the Paris Accord before any nation in the world signed it with the emissions that we've been able to reduce over the past 30-plus years. We have one of the most efficient generators in the world. I believe number two is one of the most efficient generators in the world. We have a natural gas-solar mix. In fact, we do produce more solar per capita than I believe any other community in the United States, maybe rivaling Honolulu, Hawaii, I believe. You do a tremendous job. This is not a new issue to us either. This has not just come in the past three weeks. We've been working on the 2050 net renewable plan for as long as I've been mayor. We've been talking about these issues, the natural gas reliance or lack thereof, or where are we moving from, since we've all been elected. I am very comfortable with the proposal that's before us, because we are not going to go back to burning diesel. That is for sure. And the fact that you all lock in our rates to save this community millions and millions and millions of dollars a year by doing it smart and doing it right, I certainly appreciate you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the item. Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, recognized for comment.
I'll second it.
Seconded. Mayor Pro Tim, comment? Are you good?
Oh, yeah. No, actually, I was going to say to Mr. Mayor, I mean, we're talking about a expert staff with years of experience in this. They're not just coming to the table. They're not just recommending something on the fly. You heard staff say that they have been involved in this almost 40 years and have seen the transition from one type of energy to where we are now, and we're in transition. We've got, as the mayor mentioned, the largest solar farm at an airport in the world. Nobody exceeds us when it comes to that. And so I think that we've got a plan in place, our Clean Energy Plan, that was developed with many of our environmental groups at the table giving input. And I have to believe that, you know, these issues were addressed during the development of that plan. I think we will meet our 2050 goal for sure, and certainly our effort is to be there by 2035, but this is a necessary step, I think, in that process.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to also remind us that it's this type of proactiveness that helped us save money during COVID, when other communities were buying fuel at a higher price. We had ours locked in, and we were able to save our community dollars because we had done that proactivity. And I also want to mention, since solar was mentioned, the Super Bowl that's taking place this weekend, based on what I saw this morning on the news, is going to be totally powered by solar, and they've done some things to make sure that they're able to do that. So I encourage us to watch what they're doing and pay attention to it, because they're bringing all the power into a place where they can use it for the entire Super Bowl. So we may be the largest at the airport, but I think this weekend, they're going to be sucking all the solar into Las Vegas. So, but I wanted to just remind us that just a few years ago, we were saving money on energy because of the proactiveness of individuals like yourself, Mr. Gunn and staff, so that we could save those dollars, and I believe that we are, there's no reason for us not to continue to be proactive. And so I was aware, I do take my briefings, and so the city manager has made it very clear to me where we were, what the process was for getting here, and so I too am very comfortable to support this motion.
There's a motion on the table in a second. Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we're, I want to be clear at least where I'm coming from. I'm not opposed categorically to renewing this contract, but I personally agree that I would feel more comfortable if I, if we had, this were in the context of a larger conversation about how we plan in detail to phase out our reliance on natural gas. I see, I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but, Mr., is this something Michael that you could address at least briefly?
Thank you, Commissioner Porter, Commissioners, Mayor, appointed officials. Yeah, as it turns out, and in hindsight, probably should have advocated to put this information in the agenda item, but it had been studied for the better part of two years leading up to what eventually became the Clean Energy Plan. We hired an outside consultant, GDS Associates, to help us understand what blend of renewable clean energy resources makes sense for our system, makes sense for our system in every minute of the day, every hour of the day, every day of the year. And the current agenda item is consistent with the larger Clean Energy Plan, and I could come back before the group with updates on how we're moving towards that. I could also come back with more details on what that study, the Energy Integrated Resource Plan, did share with us. But we did use outside consultant. We took our time to understand what those alternatives are, and natural gas is an essential part of it for the foreseeable future. As counterintuitive as that might be, it's still essential. Did that address your question, Commissioner?
I believe so, yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure, absolutely.
Commissioner Matlow.
Yeah, just in closing, we didn't have several years to look at this. We actually only had one week when it appeared on our agenda item under consent, and my issue is, this is not a good way to conduct government business. We are a policy-setting board that has a duty and a responsibility to review these contracts and make sure they're consistent with public policy. Again, I'm not saying this shouldn't move forward. I'm saying we should never have a situation again where we have our hands tied to a three-week contract that's been a contract for 10 years. We had such a long opportunity to address that, and no, the only alternative isn't diesel. That was one that was mentioned to replace this energy. There all are alternatives. There are renewable energies and things that we can import, but I think anytime we have this conversation, it shouldn't be on consent, because it is a priority, and we do have a Clean Energy Plan, and it would be great to see how these contracts fit into our Clean Energy Plan moving forward. I mean, it's one of our chief responsibilities. I'll make a substitute motion to bring this back to our next City Commission meeting with all four contracts, as well as a presentation on how they affect our Clean Energy goals and what alternatives to natural gas we could use if we try to move quicker.
I'll second that.
There's a substitute motion on the table to delay action today. Second, my Commissioner Porter, I will not be voting for the substitute motion. Look, for those of us that take our briefings, we are very well aware of what these contracts mean, how they impact us, and how we move forward. For the past six years alone, since I've been mayor, we've been developing our 2050 Net Neutral Plan. It comes back before us at least once a year, if not twice a year, for updates and talks about what's going on. Our mix is no different, and I will not be ever supporting going back to diesel, that is for sure. I will be respectfully voting against the substitute motion and supporting the original motion on the table. All those in favor of Commissioner Matlow's motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion fails three to two with the mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and Commissioner Williams-Cox in dissent. All those in favor of the original motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
And it passes three to two with Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Matlow in dissent. We are now on item number 9.02. Madam Manager.
Hey, Mayor Commissioners, this item requests your authorization to sponsor the Harambe Festival. As you know, the city has historically sponsored and supported this event, which celebrates African-American heritage and history. The sponsorship consists of waiving $2,165 in fees, the exact ask of the agency organizer, the event organizers, and this year's event is scheduled for February 24 in Cascade Park.
All right.
This item was pulled by Commissioner Matlow.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Matlow, you pulled the item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and actually, if you would, just give us an update on the Special Events Committee, their recommendation, and kind of the city authorized limit, I suppose.
Certainly, Commissioner. The city's co-sponsored Special Events Committee funds the cost of in-kind services, of city services that are provided for special events. That's done in a two-year funding cycle. We are actually about to begin that next funding cycle for FY 2425. Applications are now available online. They'll be due back at the end of the month, I'm sorry, due back actually in March, and at the end of this month, we'll have a workshop for those events that are interested in applying so they can learn more about the application process. The Harambe Festival actually did not apply for the current year funding cycle of FY 23 and 24. They were previously funded in 1920 and 2122, but they did not apply for this current year funding cycle, which is why we're bringing this item to you, because the request is outside of the process.
Actually, do we know why they did not apply this year?
I spoke with-
Was there a change in leadership?
I spoke with the gentleman at FAMU that had made the request. He seemed that he was maybe uncertain of whether or not he was eligible to apply at the time, because they had some other grants and, you know, different sponsorships. I was able to clarify that for him, that certainly, they certainly are absolutely eligible, and that we strongly encourage them to apply again this cycle.
Excellent. Commissioner Matlow, you still have the floor.
Sure, and if you don't know this, no worries, but do you know, of the Special Events Committee's reviews, you know how many events end up not being recommended for funding?
You know, it's varied over the years. We typically have anywhere from 12 to 17 or 18 events that apply. Usually, right around 11 or 12 are recommended. That's not because that's the number that has to be recommended, that just has been the number, typically, sometimes a few more, a few less. There's usually a handful that the committee, based on the criteria that they're given to evaluate these events on, feels that they're just not quite at that level of co-sponsored status, and so there are some that the committee does not recommend to you all to approve.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioners, several time over-
Uh, the Harambe Festival, uh, actually did not apply for the current year funding cycle of FY 20, uh, 23 and 24. They were previously funded in 1920 and 2122, but they did not apply for this current year funding cycle, which is why we're bringing this item to you because it, the request is outside of the process.
And actually, do we know why they did not apply this year?
I, I spoke with-
Was there a change in leadership?
Uh, I spoke with the, the gentleman at FAMU that had made the request. He seemed that he was maybe un, uncertain of whether or not he was eligible to apply at the time because they had some other, uh, grants and, and, you know, uh, different sponsorships. I was able to clarify that for him, that certainly, they certainly are absolutely eligible and that we, uh, strongly encourage them to apply again this cycle.
Excellent. Commissioner Matlow, you still have the floor.
Sure. And if you don't know this, uh, no worries, but do you know, of this, what the Special Events Committee's reviews, you know how many events end up not being recommended for funding?
Um, you know, it's varied over the years. We typically have anywhere from 12 to 17 or 18 events that apply. Um, usually right around 11 or 12 are recommended. That's not because that's the number that has to be recommended, that just has been the number, uh, typically, sometimes a few more, a few less. There's usually a handful that the committee, um, based on the criteria that they're given to evaluate these events on, feels that they're just not quite at that level of a co-sponsored status. And so there are some that the committee does not recommend to you all to approve.
Okay. Um, thank you. And, and Commissioners, several times over the course of the, the past few years, we've looked to fund additional events that either were not recommended by this, a Special Events Committee, or had, um, certain circumstances, um, that we elected to move forward with and push. Um, I pulled this item because we have an agenda item on consent that's asking for an exception to a City Commission policy. And I think City Commission policy should be the status quo unless City Commission direction is to explore something different. So to have something on consent that's directly contrary to City Commission policy that wasn't brought by, um, the City Commission, I don't think it is, is a good practice. With that said, I, I don't have any problem and I, you know, it's a great festival and I understand, you know, why, and, and I agree, um, that, that we can move forward with this. But I also wanted to start that broader conversation. As we see more and more events that we end up funding, if we want to be more proactive, we should look at what our actual limit is so we don't get them one-off continued, um, year after year. And I'm open to increasing, um, within reason, what that capacity is, um, through the parks and rec and through our budgeting, um, process. Uh, I move, uh, option one to authorize, uh, waiving the fees for $2,100.
Option one's been properly made by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by-
Second.
Um, Commissioner A. Williams-Cox. Any further comments? Any none? Oh, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Let me, let me just say, uh, uh, thank you, uh, Commissioner Matlow for, um, uh, making this. The Harambe Festival is one that has happened annually and has had some issues with, um, identifying enough partners in the community to fund it. So I'm very proud that the City of Tallahassee will continue to be one of those partners who will continue to fund. There's also some confusion in the community as to whether, you know, if you apply for something from Visit Tallahassee, is that City of Tallahassee? Is that county? There's, there's some confusion with that. So there's some opportunity to educate our public on how to, um, be within the cycle to, um, request this funding. And also, let me just, just mention that we, we have advisory boards who makes, who advise, but that's what they, they do. They advise, they make recommendations, but it is entirely up to this commission to decide, um, to-
Yep.
-to move forward with what to fund and because we're the ones being held accountable for each of these dollars. So I just want to say, um, as a proud alumni at Florida A&amp;M University, who is the, uh, the organizer of this, uh, Harambe Festival, I'm sure that Florida A&amp;M, uh, appreciates the opportunity to have, to have the city as a partner again this year to waive these fees because then that means that they're able to put on this festival and use their dollars for what they really, um, would need to use them for to promote the good of our, of our community during Black History Month. So I just want to, want to put that on the record.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Yeah, I want to say too, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I didn't have a problem with this being on consent, uh, because I had asked the proper questions, uh, ahead of time and knew what the answer was from staff. And so I had no problem with it being, uh, uh, on consent or being considered on consent, but certainly I support, uh, the motion and more specifically, uh, this event. It's been a tremendous event in this community for the many years that I've been here. And Florida A&amp;M University, of course, is a very good partner of ours in a number of other ventures. Uh, and so we're looking forward to the festival later this month.
Thank you. I support it as well. And contrary to what was presented earlier by my colleague, uh, I couldn't disagree more. This is exactly how the process is supposed to work. You have an advisory council, this is an unusual situation where they didn't apply. They made a recommendation, it came to you. Ms. Edwards, you did exactly what you're supposed to do, which is make, make a decision one way or the other and provide guidance to this body that provides the final word on this. That is why it's on the agenda tonight. I appreciate it. I'll support the motion on the table. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. We are done with the consent agenda. We are on the introduction of ordinance. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11.01 is the introduction of ordinance number 24Z02. An ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory located on 50 acres located on the southeastern side of the Centerville Road and Killamore Lane intersection as and in the City of Tallahassee Open Space OS from Critical Planning Area, CPA, on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 24Z, 24 dash Z dash 02 and set the first and only public hearing for February 21, 2024 at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Uh, any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this?
No, sir.
Okay. Madam Attorney, um, I know that the option, the action tonight is to formally introduce the ordinance. Point of clarification, this is the rezoning of the Northeast Park, correct?
That's what I understand.
Including what will be the parking lot off of Centerville Road, correct?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think we might need to defer to staff for the, um, specifics on that.
What I'm saying is, this is a big one, so we need to make sure that we are completely clear on this.
Sure.
And, and so this is the one where we were talking about during IA, that there will be a cut on the Canopy Road for a parking lot for the construction of the park.
I believe that is the case, but again, I would really want to defer to staff to, to make sure, uh-
Ms. Barbara, can we-
I'm trying to see if we have some, oh, yes, if you come up, please.
Hi, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, the ordinance is for the land use, not the, um, roadway access that was addressed at the August 24th blueprint meeting.
Right.
I'll see if we have bottom here in case you have questions about that.
But this is the official action, changing it to open space. Without this action, the cut doesn't take place.
Correct.
Okay. Just making sure. Uh, this is ex parte. Obviously, we will not be having the conversations, and if they do happen, they need to be reported. Please make sure in your conversations with Florida Neighborhood Association and all the other neighborhoods around, this has been a hot button topic for a long time. And as we communicate, make sure that they know that this is coming up at the, at the next February meeting so that we don't have the, you did not contact us on this big issue. Appreciate it. Okay, Commissioner Matlow.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and just for, um, clarification on the open, open space designation, if this didn't go through, would that prohibit the park from moving forward?
Open space is part of the Walone Critical Area Plan.
Right.
So that is, it will happen at some point. This is the necessary step to locate it there.
Okay. And it doesn't, for, whether there's a roadway or not, it doesn't contemplate that in this decision?
It does not.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right.
Move option number one is recommended by staff.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. We are on policy formation and direction 12.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 12.01, um, presents a request for termination of the Inclusionary Housing Agreement for the Canopy Planned Unit Development. Senior Assistant Attorney Lou Norvell is going to provide a brief presentation of the item, and then will be available to answer questions along with staff.
Mr. Norvell, good to see you.
Uh, good afternoon. So we have a request from the developer through its attorneys, uh, for termination of the Canopy Inclusionary Housing Agreement. The reason for the request is a 2019 change in the state law. Uh, Florida state law now provides that to the extent the city requires a developer to build affordable housing, the city must provide incentives to fully offset, and that's words from the statute, all costs to the developer of the affordy, affordable housing contribution. Uh, currently, there is an approximately $113,000 differential between the price of, of an inclusionary unit and the market, uh, price for a comparable, uh, unit. Uh, the city has offered a number of incentives, uh, to support these inclusionary, uh, units, and some of those, uh, incentives have been provided, but at this point, we cannot quantify incentives of $113,000. Um, as, as I mentioned, the state law requires not only that the incentives were offered, uh, but that they were actually provided to offset, uh, the cost. Uh, in this case, a density bonus was offered. It was the biggest incentive, but it was just not utilized for reasons specific to the development. So if you approve the termination, uh, the units which were constructed as affordable units will remain affordable under the existing rules, which is a seven-year period of affordability. Uh, there's 19 units that have been constructed that I understand are occupied, uh, by income-eligible house, households. Uh, and if you approve this termination, uh, the city will enter into a written agreement which would relieve the developer from construction of any further, uh, inclusionary units. The recommendation from the city attorney's office is that you approve the termination, and staff and I are here if there are any questions.
All right. This is a very technical one. Mr. Norvell, before you go anywhere and before we get to public comment, let's go ahead and ask any legal questions that you have. Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one clarifying question, the density bonuses or allowances, um, those were not utilized for reasons outside of the control of the developer, correct?
So Commissioner, uh, it's the developer's choice. Uh, so the city offered the density bonus. My understanding here is that the density bonus could have been up to 25 additional, uh, uh, units, 25% additional units, and the developer chose not to build those additional units. And it was the developer's choice and the state law gives the developer that option.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, public comment, Mr. Cook.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We do have, I believe, two speakers on this item. Uh, the first is Jason Gazvene, and followed by Aaron Tilton.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Jason Gazvene, uh, 4708 Capital Circle Northwest. Um, afternoon, uh, Mayor and Commissioners and City Staff. Thank you for your time to consider the item before you today regarding inclusionary housing. Canopy is one of the largest master planned communities in Tallahassee that Premier began working on over eight years ago. One of the components of the Canopy Project was the agreement to provide inclusionary housing, which prior to Canopy, no inclusionary housing had been ever sold in our community. Throughout the past eight years, Premier has worked with city staff regarding providing a real-world feedback about what was needed to market and sell inclusionary homes. 2020 added new, new words such as pandemic and supply chain issues into our vocabulary that created drastic increases in the construction costs, build time, and carrying costs. In what felt like months, we went from costs allowing us to sell a home at $220,000 to increased costs dictating a sales price of $325,000. Also in 2020, which I may have got this wrong, I defer to Mr. Norvell on the, on the year, 2019 versus 2020, the, the state passed a statute dictating the municipality must offset the costs of affordable housing that they require a builder developer to provide as part of a development or neighborhood. With these two factors and the price point that we have decided as a community to not exceed for single-family housing results in a deficit to the builder developer that the city must now find a way to offset. The best tool that city and every other municipality has to offset costs is to provide a density bonus to builder developers. In the circumstances of Canopy, even with us designing a number of lots to smaller sizes than have ever historically been seen in our community, due to factors such as open space requirements, stormwater requirements, and sewer capacity, made it unattainable to reach even just the base density of Canopy, much less a density bonus. With a large offset in cost overcome and no density bonus to utilize, we began expressing concern to city staff and began having meetings with multiple departments of city to discuss and hopefully find another solution to offsetting costs. We quickly began to realize that there were obstacles to other ideas offset, such as waiving of tap fees that prevented those from being solutions. Over the next three-plus years, we continue to build inclusionary homes in Canopy, all while expressing our concerns and asking for solutions with city staff that have led up to today. At Premier, we hope we have demonstrated our commitment to providing housing for first-time home buyers in our community, of being the first to sell inclusionary housing, but also by volunteering to be held to the inclusionary housing requirement Land and Hills, and it was not a requirement of that zoning. The inclusionary housing program has pushed us as a company to create a, a, um, sorry, to create design of our lots as well as of our homes that caters to allow us to be more affordable.
You have 15 seconds.
Uh, thank you, sir. Short synopsis is that in regards to, we are here today asking for relief from the agreement due to the fact that leaving the cost burden on a developer and the Canopy Project for any neighborhood in our community, for that matter, is in conflict with state statute and is not sustainable without either an offset of costs or compensation for said costs to developer. With that understanding, we hope that the mayor, Commissioners-
Thank you.
-can agree.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Aaron Tilton. And at this time, that's the only other speaker I have, Mayor.
Right. Your name and address for the record, please.
Aaron Tilton of Sterns Weaver Miller, uh, addresses 106 East College Avenue, Suite 700 here in Tallahassee. Um, I'm here on behalf of, of the developer as well, Oxbottom Mortgage Holdings, and wanted to make myself available in case there are any questions. Um, you know, we, we've worked very closely, um, with the city attorney's office, um, on this issue for quite some time now. Um, they've been wonderful to work with and, and really appreciate, um, you know, their collaboration on this issue. Um, but one point I just wanted to clarify, because Commissioner Porter, you did ask a, a great question, which is, um, you know, why haven't we developed at a, a point where bonus density would be available? Um, and so I wanted to just make sure the point is clear that Canopy is within a planned unit development. It's not traditional zoning. And so it's not, um, you know, for example, with the Land and Hills project, we're dealing with a base density across the entire project. It's, it's fairly, um, simple to calculate what a bonus density would be there and, and to make that calculation work. Um, Canopy is within the Walone Critical Area Plan, and that dictates the densities that are available as well as the PUD on top of that. Um, with stormwater, sewer, and other site constraints, they've only been able to develop the property at about 53% of what the maximum development potential for the property would be. Thank you. With that, if anyone else has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Great.
Thank you.
Please stay tuned. Our next speaker.
No additional speakers on this item.
Okay. Colleagues.
Quick question.
Sure, Commissioner, I mean, Mayor Pro Tim.
Um, how much would it cost the city if we were to take action not to approve this item? Lou?
So Commissioner, my understanding serves about 47 units that have yet to be constructed under the agreement. Uh, at just simple math, if we have $100,000 differential in cost, just simply, we're looking at roughly a $4 million differential, which I understand, uh, somewhere possibly higher than that for the offset, uh, that would have to be made up somehow.
Okay.
And that money would have to come from somewhere in that budget that we just talked about earlier. So with that, uh, Mr. Mayor, I would move staff recommendation option number one.
Option number one's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Commissioner Williams-Cox, recognize for comment?
No, I just wanted to make this thing-
Excellent. Any further comment? Commissioner Matlow.
Um, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm, I'm going to support this motion, but I, I just wanted to, to talk about the broader issue. We, we can't depend on developers and private entities to solve the crisis of housing in, in our, in our community. It, it's just not possible. And we can come up with incentives and, and, and try to make it work, but as we see, it, it's difficult. You know, they can't make the numbers work, we can't make the numbers work, and we, we come back to here. I do think we have opportunity as a city to work without having to draw a bunch of lines and numbers and trades and this and that to see how we can affect it. We, we own 400, nearly 400 acres, um, in, in a relatively similar area. We have, we have other properties. I, I think we need to go back to the drawing board and say, let's not make it that complicated. How can we use our resources to directly make sure? Because 50%, probably 50% of the community won't be able to afford what, what's being built if we just look at 100% of AMI. There's no new construction coming online that's affordable for 50% of our community, and that, that is going to take a conversation. And I don't think we can piecemeal it and, and, and try to expect private developers to lift too much, um, of the burden when we do have resources, we do have land, and figure out how we can actually make those price points. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Mayor Pro Tim.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you. Um, a, as you all may know or may not know, uh, affordable housing has one of, been one of my top priorities since I've been here on the commission.[1718.11] I worked with the Tallahassee Housing Authority to get some of the original seed money for what is now Columbia Gardens at South City. I serve, I represent this commission on the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and I'm also on the Board of the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium. We haven't piecemealed this. All of this has been carefully planned. We haven't depended on developers. As you heard, the Gazvenys were the first and only developer to even offer to do the inclusionary housing. And we've provided 3,000 affordable housing units in this city, from what I understand from reports we've gotten, of course, from our staff. So we, that's what our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee is all about, to plan for how we will move forward in providing affordable housing in our community. So it hasn't been piecemealed, and everybody's welcome to come to those meetings. We've got a meeting coming up later this month. We've got a report where we've made recommendations as to how we can move forward with providing affordable and low-income housing in our community. And we're working with other partners, such as, I knew I was going to have a senior moment here.
Lenders Consortium.
Lenders Consortium, not the Lenders Consortium, the Habitat. Habitat for, I'm sorry, I was having one of my senior moments, y'all. But partners like Habitat and others that have, the Bethel Community Development Corporation, Bethel AME Church, that have committed to providing low-income and affordable housing for residents in our community. So, no, it's not piecemeal. It's been a concerted effort. It's the number-two priority in our strategic plans, second only to public safety, and I'd say they were right there neck and neck, actually. And so I look forward to continuing to represent the commission in moving our community forward and providing that level of housing which is desperately needed in our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. There's a motion on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 12.02. Madam Manager.
Mayor, Commissioners, this item provides an update on the ongoing 2024 Florida Legislative Session, highlighting key bills that may impact the city. The item identifies key bills related to municipal surcharges, general fund transfers, the millage rates, and homestead exemption that if passed would have significant negative fiscal impact on the city. Dr. Thomas Whitley is here from Strategic, Director of Strategic Innovation, is here to provide a brief update.
Dr. Whitley, thank you. I noticed that we don't really have any recommended actions, just accept the update, but I appreciate you providing.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Manager, Commissioners, appreciate a few moments. Obviously, you spoke a little bit earlier today during your budget workshop about some potential fiscal impacts of some potential legislation that we're watching across the street. This item is intended to keep you up-to-date and informed about what's happening during the 60-day session. There are many bills that are filed this session. There have been over 1,800 bills that have been filed. Most of them will die. They will never really see the light of day. That's probably generally a good thing. We're over halfway through this session. We're in week five. I think we have 32 days left. So we're beginning to get to a point in session where we can have a little more clarity as to what we can expect to pass. Of course, things can change. Commissioner Richardson, you know quite well how that happens. What I will say is the theme that we talked about, that Casey Cook from League of Cities talked with us about at our annual retreat back in January, remains true, of attacks on nearly every major revenue source that municipalities have in this state, while also potential legislation to increase costs for municipalities. That theme has not changed. I will say, though, the process, as it's worked through at this point in our session, we are cautiously optimistic. So we're tracking a number of bills. Some of those particular ones relate to our utilities, which obviously had a healthy conversation this morning about the benefit that those provide to our community and also to our general fund. And so potential attacks there on general fund transfers, surcharges that are currently allowed by statute, and things like that. Our most significant threat was House Bill 1277. The best news is that when the Agenda for Commerce Committee meeting tomorrow morning came out yesterday afternoon, that was not on the agenda. That's not a complete death knell, but that's usually a really good sign that a bill has stalled. Its Senate companion has three committee references and has not yet been heard in a committee. It's, you know, it could still potentially be alive. There are all kinds of gymnastics that the legislature can jump through if they so choose, but we're feeling pretty optimistic about that one. There are a couple others that we have talked about. I wanted to give you a brief update on the Millage Rates Bill, House Bill 1195, that would require a 2/3 majority of a governing body to increase millage rates beyond where they currently sit in any year passed at the State Affairs Committee this morning. It will be on the Finance and Tax Committee in the Senate, its companion bill, tomorrow morning. The Finance and Tax Committee Chair is the Senate sponsor. So we've expected that. We expect that to pass. That does have some traction. We'll continue to track that and see where it goes. But as we're watching this theme of attacks on our ability to generate revenue as a municipality, this is one of those, you know, making it more difficult than the current standard is to increase a millage rate to cover costs that may be affected by cuts in general fund transfers or things of that nature. We're also watching very closely a number of bills, House resolutions, and potential ballot measures related to homestead exemption values. So there's one that would increase the homestead exemption value another $25,000. That would result in an extremely significant hit to our ad valorem revenues here. As you know, less than 50% of our property is on the tax rolls here in Tallahassee. We still have a very low millage rate, but that would be a compounding effect year-over-year. That particular provision seems to not be getting a lot of traction. One that does seem to be getting traction, a kind of sister provision, is increasing the homestead exemption by CPI annually. That's getting traction. It's passed the House, it's been received in messages in the Senate, it's been referred to Senate Appropriations Committee. It's not yet been agendaed. So we'll see if that gets taken up and passed in the Senate. That would have, our early estimates are about $160,000 revenue ad valorem negative impact in the first year, and of course, that would only compound moving forward. So we're going to continue to watch that. Those, of course, would have to be approved by the voters on the ballot in November. And then the last one I wanted to mention to you briefly here is a sovereign immunity bill, which obviously we tracked very closely last session, looking to increase those caps. There's a bill, again, this session, that would increase the caps from where they currently sit at 200,000 per person or 300,000 per incident to 400,000 to 600,000. I will say that the Senate version has a CPI increase for those caps, increases the caps and has a CPI increase every five years. The House version has been amended to remove a CPI increase and to specify that any liability limit that was in place at the time of an incident is the one that would, that the incident would be held to. So for instance, you could see a situation where an incident could happen where the current liability is $300,000. And so if an incident happened today, but the law changes and it doesn't, you know, work through the process for a couple of years, the limit could be $600,000 even though the incident happened when the statutory limit was $300,000. So the House version's been amended in a positive way. So if it does get passed, we would, we obviously like that amendment. We work very closely, as you know, there are a lot of other bills. We work very closely with our partners of the Florida League of Cities, Florida Municipal Electric Association, and cities all across the state. And of course, we do have contract lobbyists that are working for us tirelessly throughout the session. There are a lot of bills that we track, a lot more than we put in the agenda item because we didn't want to put you to sleep reading it. But as you can imagine, we have a very broad organization, and so there's legislation, potential legislation that touches every corner of our organization every session. And so we work closely with all of our departments, make sure that we have a good grasp on that and what the potential impacts would be to the organization. So that's a high-level update where we are. We're cautiously optimistic, but of course, if any or all of some of these potential bills become law, there are significant material negative fiscal impacts that we would experience and that we would have to consider, as you know, as you discussed during your budget workshop this morning. So I'll stop there. Of course, I'm available to answer any questions if you have.
All right, Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on the side?
No, sir, we do not.
Colleagues, any questions about what's going on in the legislature? Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In all sincerity, is anything good happening that we're, that we're, you know, supporting?
Yeah, so there are some pieces of legislation that we are supporting. There's some legislation on protecting critical infrastructure that would make it a felony to intentionally damage, you know, some of our critical utility infrastructure and things like that. I do believe we've got, we do have that update in the item. There's some others that we're following on cybersecurity incidents that we do believe would be beneficial removing our liability as an organization if we are affected by a cybersecurity incident. So there are some good things that are happening, but increasingly, there are threats, right? And that's what we deal with, and a lot of the work that we do is, of course, trying to fend off those threats. And these are threats that even if we're successful this session, we would expect to continue to come back.
Thank you.
Great. All right, so Commissioner Williams Cox, I'm sorry.
I was just wanting to confirm that session ends March 8.
Well, that's the plan, Commissioner. If they can, if they can get their work done on time, you know, get a budget, come to a budget agreement in time for a 72-hour cooling-off period before March 8, that's the plan. We don't, we've not heard any rumblings at this point of any potential extensions, but it's not outside the realm of possibility.
It's election year, Thomas. It ends March 8th, because they can't raise money until it ends.
Well, that's right, of course. I mean, so we expect that to happen.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, you make a motion to accept the report?
Yes.
Probably moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Thank you. We're on item number 12.03. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just an update for you on your Charter Review Committee. As you obviously know, at your last meeting in December, each of you appointed two members to a Charter Review Committee. That group had its first meeting on January the 16th, so very much like you, came back after the holidays and jumped right into a meeting there. That meeting on January 16th was largely organizational, informational, so advising them of the charge you'd provided, going through their bylaws with them, having the city attorney update them on the laws and constructs that guide them as they do all of our boards and committees. They did at that meeting select Mark Mustin as their chair, Elaine Bryant as the vice chair, and then, not formally but effectively, set up weekly meetings until they conclude their business. So that first meeting, they did not take up substantive matters, but in subsequent meetings on January 25th, February 1st, they have discussed several of the items that you asked them to look at. They have had discussion on number of electors, considering whether they, there should be an expansion of the size of the city commission from five to a larger number. Also, discussion concerning commission salaries, where those stand and what those should be. And then at the February 1st meeting, they had some discussion of the timing of elections, particularly looking at that issue when you have two candidates for a city commission race and only two. Should that be held as it has been in an August primary timeframe, or should that move to a general election? They had specifically, in their discussion, said they would not make any decisive actions prior to February 8. I think the idea there was they wanted to have time to receive information, discuss amongst themselves, get information from staff, let us respond to questions they might have, and then, before making a final decision. So their next meeting is February 8, so they will meet again tomorrow night, 6:00 p.m., Tallahassee Room. They could begin taking actions on those items that you've assigned to them tomorrow night. There's nothing that requires them to. They are required to provide you a report. Your instruction to them was 90 days from appointment, so, and then about 30 days to convene them, so they have about 60 days to work, so mid-March. And I would expect report from them mid-March, which means you would get it at your, the last meeting of March would be the objective for you to have it. That way, you as a city commission have time to review, discuss, make any determinations you would like to make, how you want to proceed with any recommendations they make or don't make, and then anything that you bring forward, obviously go to the ballot upon your approval. That would also give time for the city attorney to finalize and draft any language that would need to go to the Supervisor of Elections Office. So that's sort of the lay of the land there. Again, they've had a couple of meetings. We'll be meeting effectively on a weekly basis. I think the one other thing I would point out is the agenda for your meeting didn't have materials, but the city website, talgov.com, has a page dedicated to the charter review process. And so if you were to go there now, you would be able to see minutes from those first couple of meetings, you'd be able to see the agenda for tomorrow night's meeting. So any, and any information that might have been provided to them will be in their agenda materials as well. So if there's a comparison of other Florida cities, how they're structured, or compensation, or whatever it might be, all of that material is there. And we've even had a couple of items where maybe a public records request came in for something, and we said, we'll just put it on that website so that everything's there, nobody's missing anything, both the committee and the public have access. And that's what I have, but I'd be glad to entertain questions if you have them.
Excellent. Any public comment on the side?
Yes, sir, we do have two speakers on this item.
Why don't we go ahead and hear from the speakers, and then we'll come back and have the session.
Very good. Our first speaker is Bernard Stevens, and our second speaker is Stanley Sims.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
It's a beautiful day in the neighborhood. My name is Reverend Bernard Michael Stevens, Jr., and my address is Ex. Zim. Good afternoon, colleagues. I've got news for you today. We don't work for you. Last time I seen this organizational chart, at the top of that, that say the citizens of Tallahassee, John Daly. So therefore, you answer to me. You work for me. You work for everybody in this chamber, sir. Okay, let me get that off my chest. As far as the city charter, Ms. Toman, I'm telling you not. I advise you to get your legal team together because you all have several flaws and imperfections inside of your charter review. This is a John Daly stunt, Curtis Richardson stunt, and Diane Williams Cox stunt. We don't need no extra commissioners. They only want to do this because they know they have their buddy-buddy system going on, and we're tired of it. They don't like it. But it's okay. We're not giving anybody a raise because you can't take care of the public servants. We're tired of that, okay? So we're not doing that. I'm telling you that to your face. So get over it. The people are going to vote, and they're going to be heard. We're not giving you any extra ammunition. We're not giving you anything to think you're going to run this city and continue to keep us asleep. We won't, not broke. We won't. I'm glad you know that. And Curtis, he having senior moments, remember? He have a lot of senior moments. And you all, speaking of which, let me go ahead and get this employee. Mr. Steve Rafford was terminated. You ain't got nothing in your charter regarding employees. One of your sleazy staff members decided to take a picture of him sleep on a city golf cart. How many times this man been sleeping in meetings? And y'all ain't done nothing to him about that? Nevertheless, it don't even begin there. It gets worse. I got several employees who was terminated based off of them and their drug use. Your chief of police didn't fire his officer when he took that controlled substance. What did you do? You upheld it. You're crooked. You crooked as they come. And Reese Gold just is crooked, and Cynthia Barber, your name was on some of them reports too. You just as green as the rest of these four clowns up here that don't do their job like they supposed to. And you know what? We done had enough of this. I plan on telling the citizens of Tallahassee everything. All that corruption you got in your police department, I got so many reports, it don't make no sense, especially officers. Matter of fact, I'll go ahead and name a couple. We got Officer Aaron Scott, that was done by Deputy Chief Tonya Smith, Officer Jeffrey Ballup, Deputy Chief Maurice Home, Officer Derek Braxton, Officer Shane Braxton. All that was done by Lawrence Revel, Officer Eric Robinson, Officer Laquisha Williams, Sergeant Gavin Lamore, Officer Benjamin Gruger, Investigator Roger Miller, Officer Red Harvey, Detective Angela Robertson-Pritchett, Officer Michael Vonstein. I got every single piece of documentation on y'all, and y'all fraud and your discrimination, and I plan on giving it to Dr. Jackson, and we gonna just go ahead and tell the FBI about all that little crooked corruption that y'all got. And I also plan on telling you formally, I plan on filing a complaint on you, I plan on filing a complaint on Mr. Richardson and Ms. Cox for all your little malfeasance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Stanley Sims.
All right. Name and address for the record, please.
Usually leaves when I come. I'm Stanley Sims at 1320 Avondale Way. First of all, I want to say, Ms. Barber, congratulations, you sitting up there on that dais. I thought I would never get the opportunity to see your name lighting up there. That is very good, you know. I know that's a, that's a special moment for you, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. I want to go to the charter review. Mr. Mayor, we have really are having a very robust substantive conversation with the charter review. I want to give kudos to both of the chairmans. I went in with some false, preconceived notions, but they have seemed to be that the two chairmans have set an environment where people can actually express themselves. The only concern that I do have is, and I don't want to say this as if I'm being negative because that is not the sense of that room. It's just a, it's a concern of mine. I think that, and this is my opinion, Mayor, this is not what they say. I think that when we keep talking about this time schedule, there is a sense of urgency to move faster than what I think we're ready to proceed with. And an example of that, and I say this... And an example of that, and I say this as a plus for the committee and not a D. They had set dates to vote. We have four issues. But because those issues have not been properly vetted, and each time we discuss, there's some more additional critical information that need to be in when it comes to compensation package, talking even about the comparison with different cities and stuff like that there. So I'm, 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 I'm good with the conversation, I'm good with things are going, and I'm just saying as a concern and not a high-level concern, I would love a message from you guys saying that, you know, if we doing it right and you need more time, good, because they ain't getting it. You know, they're trying to hit this target date. And I think that we ain't voted on none of the four, and it's gonna be a lot of discussions when we start voting. So I'm just, just a little concerned about that. And the next thing, and I know that Mr. Cook kind of braced it, but I want to reinforce it. If we are pushing these timeframes, can we get a little help from Communications Department with a better, you know, roundabout circle on the web, on the TV?
You're at 30 seconds.
You know, about it, out in the newspaper, any little way that we can kind of get that out? Because each meeting, Mayor, we're getting more people, more people, more people. And, and I've even heard some of the concerns of, from of the board members, like, "Well, when we get a packed room, you know, we have to restart all over." So if we can work on the advertisement, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
No additional speakers, Mayor.
No, no, no real action on this. It was an information-only item. Comments or anything? All right. None. Do we have any other business coming for the city commission this evening?
Oh, no.
Okay, we are on unengaged speakers. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. We have several speakers tonight. The first is Harry Brown. As with the other part of our meeting, speakers will have three minutes each, so Mr. Brown will be our first speaker, followed by Bernard Stevens.
Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
I'm Harry Brown, and I reside at 5431. I'm here to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God. I spent 19 years and three months in this city of Tallahassee. I tell you, I had many years of horrific experiences under Anita Favors, under John Marks, Sharon O'Fahony, Marlon Brown. They did me some real dirt. Anita Favors had Sharon O'Fahony write a three-page document about Harry Brown, all he did was sexually harass women, his entire employee. Sharon O'Fahony had one of her employees come in and lie, said, "I asked her for her phone number because I was seeking sexual favors." That's another lie. I could go on and on with some of the experiences I had here at City Hall. John Marks called me into his office, sat me down, and said, "Mr. Brown, Anita Favors has shown great restraint in dealing with you." And he said, "I do not like hearing anything about my city manager," quote-unquote. I went on and on, and I must say, God knew what I was here for. He knew why he put me here, because he knew I was being a Joseph, like Joseph, that did what he did in the Bible. And Joseph was put in jail for many years for stuff that he did not do. In fact, it was 13 years he was put in jail. Harry Brown spent 19 years and three months here in horrific situations. But I thank God that he gave me fearless courage to put up with the garbage I put up with. And after doing the 19 years and three months, Tom Coe ran me out of City Hall with a gun at my back, with no discipline in my file. And Mr. Cook, I've asked you for some record. You provided me some record, but you did not provide me the record that showed that Harry Brown resigned from the city of Tallahassee. That's a big lie. I never resigned from the city of Tallahassee. I was run out with a gun at my back. This is a very corrupt city government. It is. And I tell you, when I started to work for the city of Tallahassee, I had read that the city of Tallahassee is the most racist city in America, not just Florida. And that's why you got the city charter the way it is over 200 years.
Thank you very much.
Same thing, and not doing anything for city employees.
Our next speaker, please.
Next is Bernard Stevens, and then Michael McBride.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hey, my name is Reverend Bernard Michael Stevens, Jr. My address is exempt. Listen, I have started an investigation called Operation Capital City Corruption. I plan on writing a book about this. I plan on letting everybody know about all this corruption that you got. And you know what, Curtis? That church that's being built over there on Ridge Road, them apartments, that belonged to Diane Pastor, the same pastor that was with Gregory James and Lawrence Revel, them the two that laid their hands on his head over there at Beth the Church. Now, it's mighty ironic, right, that this man is over at Beth the Church, and Beth the Church seem to be the first church in Tallahassee that was by the Reverend James Page, which who was a slave preacher. Yeah, I did my research. Nevertheless, at the end of the day, you wouldn't have gotten money for that little place over there on the South Side, over there in Diane area, and you worked with the Tallahassee Housing Authority. Sir, you've been in office for a long time. How much longer do you have to keep these people the way they are? If you all sitting around here and have these folks moving in these apartments, you expect the crime? That's what you do. You set it up. That's the reason why ain't nothing been done to Holden Street, they all out of code enforcement. There's a whole bunch of stuff going on around here. I don't understand what y'all been doing the last 20-some years. We ain't electing the same people and the same crap that y'all sit up here and do. We tired of that. Nevertheless, Reverend Dr. RB Holmes, that is Diane Williams Cox Pastor, they have gotten federal money due to the shootings. Diane is a part of the police department. She goes around there and goes to all them meetings. She own it too. Greg James was just up here a couple of meetings ago waving. Diane got up, she moved to the edge, sure did. So all on camera, I got it. I got my case, sir. Not only that, Proctor warned y'all about Lawrence Revel, nobody listened to him. Revel got so much corruption in there, it's sad. So many of his officers, I got 15 on paper, who sitting around there and been discriminated upon. But you all have fired seven employees for drugs, but yet instead Lawrence Revel still has a job when one of his officers took a controlled substance. That, once again, is against city policy. Not only that, it's against city policy for your officers not to turn on their body cams. And what do you do about that? Nothing. I came in here and marched and told you about it. Look, man, I'm telling you, this is ridiculous. This is ridiculous. This is ridiculous. John Daly, I'm calling for your resignation. I'm calling for Mr. Gold's resignation, Mr. Richardson, and Ms. Cox, because you all have manipulated our government. You have kept these people in a slave mindset based off of Curtis Richardson methodology, and it's not right. So quite naturally...
30 seconds remaining.
I'm sorry, sir, you say 30?
30.
Thank you so much. Yeah, it's a lot of officers over there that are unhappy with the way this leadership is going. And speaking of which, I also got some firefighters that have been discriminated upon. I got John Aldrich, Jr., that was done by Chief Jerome Games, firefighter Catherine Golkey, firefighter Kevin Glassner, firefighter Jeremy Rogers. Yes, sir, I'm ready. Ms. Toman, y'all better get that stuff together, because I will get a, listen, this is what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna start a class action lawsuit on y'all. Y'all gonna pay these people for their suffering. Yes, sir!
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Michael McBride is next speaker, and then we'll hear from Erwin Jackson.
Name and address for the record, please.
You have timed that a little differently. My name is Michael McBride. I still live at 124 Mill Branch Road, and this might come as a surprise to you, but I'm here to talk about restorative justice. First, I want to commend the commission for being willing to make a difference. Your approval to invest in restorative justice some moons ago is now at the point of bearing fruit. A contract has recently been set between the city of Tallahassee and Connection First, CFI, whose mission is to repair harm. This partnership is a pathway to make that difference, and for that, I thank you. I also want to note that I have been told the professional advice and support of this opportunity from the city employees to CFI has been most commendable, especially Ms. Ashley Edwards. You should be very proud of how your willingness to make change is soundly supported by your staff, and for that too, I thank you. Now comes the hard part, the work. I would like to request that you take your past willingness to fund this opportunity and turn it towards a willingness to advocate for it. Learn about it, talk about it, promote it. This work cannot happen in a vacuum because many local resources are required to increase connection and overcome barriers to support. When the leaders of a community show knowledge of and support for a program, their community is much more likely to believe in it, which some, with some informed support at the top, a difference can be made. While many would scoff and call this an intervention program, my son Connor would call it an accountability program. Establishing a norm for accountability is a community-changing thought. Please lead in the support of that thought. Lastly, I have read news articles inferring a discussion about, "Once a gun is in the hand, it is too late." I am gobsmacked that someone would voice in public such an overtly obvious concept. But now that concept is out of the bag, let's jump on it. You have the means and the opportunity to break the cycle by advocating for programs like this new partnership with CFI. You can be the catalyst for change by promoting efforts that teach people that do harm rather than isolating them, holding people accountable rather than blaming them.
You're at 30 seconds.
Changing people rather than incarcerating them, all things of which Daniel Tiger would be very proud. A tentative restorative justice is, how can the community work together to repair harm? This should be your foundation for leading the way forward. With this commission's active supportive programs, such as this restorative justice program with CFI, that foundation can be sound. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker, please.
Erwin Jackson, and then Dot Inman Johnson.
Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Dr. Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff. Few weeks ago, this commission identified an ex-mayor, John Marks, worthy of having a city building named after him. Marks's actions while in office do not support this recognition. John Marks worked in a law firm with Alan Katz, later saw unemployment with Harold Knowles' Law Firm here in town. It seems that John Marks were not terribly successful in either of these two law firms. As a result, a scheme was created by Knowles and Marks that Marks would run for mayor so he could direct city contracts to his business friends and associates. Let me explain. Shortly after being elected, Marks was notified that Tallahassee will receive $1.4 million in federal money to install a fence around the airport. Mark had to make an important decision. Should I hire a fence contractor with staff, equipment, and 20 years' experience? Or should I award this contract to my law partner, Harold Knowles? Well, Knowles had recently formed a company named Pinnacle Construction Group, who had no employees, no equipment, and no experience in fence construction. However, Knowles did know John Marks, our new mayor. You guessed it, Marks awarded this contract to his business associate, Pinnacle Construction, to a nice finder's fee, is what he received, probably 10% these type of deals, or around $140,000, and used the balance of the money to hire the fence company that was competing with Pinnacle to actually install the fence. In 2010, Marks directed $1.5 million to his buddy Harold to rehab Chelsea Apartments, 1602 Stucky Avenue. I suspect that Marks was generating more money for his business partner as mayor than he ever did practicing law. Marks has also wanted to give his campaign manager, Sean Pittman, some city cash. Pittman was allowed to serve as a city lobbyist. When I and others vocalized objections to Pittman serving as city lobbyist, Marks agreed to terminate Pittman's contract and hire Ronald Book, a lobbying group out of Hollywood, Florida. I later learned that Book would hire Pittman so he could continue to work as a Tallahassee lobbyist. Book's firm was simply being used to hide Pittman's activities from the public.
You have 20 seconds remaining.
Maybe this explains why just this past Sunday, Book wrote a letter to the editor on Sunday claiming Marks was an unsung hero. Yes, he was. One thing for sure, Marks was a hero to his business associates and friends who received city contracts during his three terms as mayor. And this is the man you commissioners voted to name a building after.
Thank you, Dr.
Embarrassing.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Next speaker is Dot Inman Johnson, who will be followed by Samuel Dohler.
Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Dot Inman Johnson, 2121 Trescott Drive, Tallahassee 32308. We are five months into the new fiscal year. Almost half of this fiscal year is gone, and the firefighters do not have a contract. They are the only city employees who have not received their pay raises and their benefits for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023. This is embarrassing. It is especially embarrassing after witnessing them coming up to be honored and watching you guys hug and shake their hands when you won't vote to give them and their families their pay raise. It is inexcusable. I was surprised to learn tonight at the budget meeting that Gattston County, Jefferson County, and Waculla County all pay more to their firefighters than we do here in Tallahassee, the most urban county in the Big Bend, with multi-level buildings and many multifamily complexes that are being added all the time, that these people have to risk their lives to protect, not just housing, but our vehicles, our lives. They put their lives on the line all the time for us, and many citizens may not be aware that they get a direct benefit from high fire ratings by having lower insurance costs. And we need to do better than that. The three of you...
You're at 30 seconds.
The mayor, Curtis, and Diane could very easily put an end to this deadlock by one of you voting to end it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Next speaker is Samuel Dohler, followed by Stanley Sims.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Samuel Dohler, and 32304.
You have three minutes.
I'm here today to talk to you guys about SB 576 and HB 601, two bills that are currently making their way through our state government. They are a huge threat to our local policy because what they do is they get rid of civilian police review boards and strip localities of the power to manage cases where police have used force, and takes away all the ability of the city to be able to oversee that power. And the problem with this is that TPD needs an external enforcement mechanism, because TPD already has internal enforcement mechanisms, but they consistently fail to hold the police accountable. Marcy's law has recently gone through its lapse inside of the courts, and the courts have ruled that you cannot protect an officer's name with Marcy's law. But the city has continued to hide officers' names who were involved in killing civilians under a law that was meant to protect victims. These are city employees. These are city employees. This would never be acceptable anywhere in the private sector for a police officer to be able to just kill someone and have no consequences of it. They are city employees. Our taxes are paying for this right now. And this comes after the civilian police review board has been significantly weakened, where they're unable to do any community outreach, press releases, create public statements, or review budget, contracts, or collective bargaining agreements. So I ask you, what exactly is the civilian police review board reviewing? Because it really does not seem to be much. It seems like just a token to show that, oh, we're doing something. But even that is at threat of being removed right now. We want you to reverse these harmful policies, and we also want you to come out against these two bills, because they are a direct threat to our community at a time when we continue to decrease regulation on police and increase their funding, and then fund no other social services adequately. I mean, the firefighters, for almost a year now, have been trying to negotiate a better pay and better benefits.
You're at 30 seconds.
This is absolutely unacceptable for any city, let alone the capital of Florida. It is absolutely unacceptable, and this city needs to start doing better. Thank you.
Thank you. Before our next speaker, a point of clarification. In the case of Marcy's Law, the city of Tallahassee was actually the city that was sued. Because we were fully in favor of full transparency, so we actually, that was taken all the way to the state Supreme Court, and it was ruled in favor of the city of Tallahassee for complete transparency. Correct?
That's correct.
All right. Because it was stated, it made it sound like that the city was the one that was fighting it. In fact, we were the ones being sued in that case that went all the way, on behalf of all cities in the state of Florida, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Excellent. Our next speaker, please. Your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor, for clearing that up. My name is Shawn Pittman, John Mayer, John Marks. We all live at 1320 Avondale Way. It's Black History Month, and in Black History Month, I'm Black Diggity. And it bothers me, even though that is your lawful right, to come up here and trash African-Americans who have not done anything wrong. Can I get some police help? I'm being heckled. And when I'm being heckled, I have a hard time pressing a case. I've been heckled by the police, chief of police, now I'm being heckled by citizens. Can I reclaim my time?
Keep moving, please.
May I reclaim my time? I was interrupted.
Keep moving, please.
But he don't come up here and talk about Scott, who went to court.
Dr. Jackson, please.
No, no, let him do it. He's white. That's white privilege.
That's white privilege.
See there? That's white privilege.
I'm gonna have to ask for some calm. This gentleman has the time, Dr. Jackson.
Can I reclaim my time?
Please let him have his time, okay? Give him another 15 seconds, I'm getting tired of this.
15 seconds?
Yes, sir.
You gave him two minutes when he was interrupted.
He was not interrupted, just move forward.
No, before, at other times.
I'm gonna call your time altogether.
You started it all.
I'm gonna call your time altogether.
Well, you can do that, Mayor, but it don't make it right.
Let's move on to the next speaker.
So you're canceling my whole three minutes?
Let's move on to the next speaker. Let's move on to the next speaker.
Next speaker is Delilah.
Mayor, you're not gonna allow me to speak?
It's Delilah Pierre.
I'm not gonna, I can't speak.
I just said that I am gonna maintain control of this meeting. I asked you to move forward. We are in recess.
We all live at 1320 Avondale Way. It's Black History Month. And in Black History Month, I'm Dog Diggity Black. It's turned up. And I don't like people coming up here insulting my cousins when white folks done actually did what he accusing them of doing and went to prison. I've watched this man denigrate, insult my Auntie Anita Fabers, all black leaders of this government. But he's never said nothing about Reese Gold, not that he ain't done nothing. He ain't never done, he won't never say a bad word about John Daly. Even the mayor say, "Oh, Mr. Jackson, please work with me." He don't never tell me to please work with him. All he does is tell them, "Kick him out. Handle it." It's Black History Month. Get off my brothers and sisters. Start that stuff in March. No, you don't, because you don't care about the black community.
Mr. Sims, will you please address your comments?
I am.
That'd be great.
I am. And I'm just tired of, I want some real consistency. My last issue, Mr. Mayor, this is not a complaint, Ms. Amy Tooman, this is not a complaint. I have a legitimate complaint that I need to file. I called the county. I said, "This gentleman is an employee of Pace." They explained to me, Mayor, just because he's an employee of Pace, but the city of Tallahassee handles their HR administrative. Your HR director is saying he can't talk to me because he's not a city employee. But now I've talked to the people in place, and they keep saying that the city of Tallahassee handles HR for place. There's not a HR in place. It's a wall, Mayor. And every time I try to get some understanding, they say, "Oh, we're in litigation, I can't talk to you." Can you turn, can you stop sending me a utility bill till we get out of litigation? Because I'm still paying my light bill. If I speed, the cops still gonna give me a speeding ticket, but the chief won't talk to me. But he willing to put charges on me. That's not consistent, Mayor. Now, I ain't feeding him, he feeding me. All right? I'm just saying, I'm not filing a complaint. I need directions on how to get good service. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, thank you for calling me back up.
Delilah Pierre. Delilah Pierre, followed by Tavish Bryan.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Delilah. I'm the president of the Tallahassee Community Action Committee, and I'm coming here representing also the National Alliance Against Racist and Political Repression. My address is exempt. I want to ask the city commission to stand up against House Bill 601 and Senate Bill 576. These two bills threaten any opportunity for police accountability and community oversight in our community, and I think it's important for the city to stand up against it. After the Black Lives Matter protests, where thousands of people came out on the streets in 2020, the city commission unanimously voted for a citizens' police review board. And ever since then, the city commissioners, John Daly, Curtice Richardson, but especially City Commissioner Diane William Cox, have done their utmost best to destroy the board, to make it as powerless as possible, to prevent it from doing things like actually organizing the community, to prevent it from creating its own press releases and statements, and to prevent it from even organizing in the community. And you've gone out of your way to attack members of the board and made up lies about members of the board, and that's facts, stated from the Tallahassee Democrat itself. Take Diane William Cox, who has said that a member of the board, Taylor Keita, had a cup that said "Expletive the police" on it. The cup said abolish and had a sticker of police brutality. She used that to not just remove Taylor Keita from the board, but also to remove Barry Monroe and Chief Gaines from the board. Now, I know they weren't specifically kicked off, but their terms were not restated, were not renewed. There's a serious problem in this community with police accountability. There's a serious problem with actually following through with the declarations that are made. And I think a great example of that is the fact that y'all have not released the names of the police officers responsible for the murder of Tony McDade, Will Bond Woodard, Rahim Reeders. Where's that information being released to the city? You said you fought for that, then why haven't you released the information? Why did Assistant Attorney Jennifer Painter tell me I needed to create a public records request for y'all to release the names of the officers responsible for these killings? It's an embarrassment to our city. During those House Bill 601 meeting and the Senate Bill 576 meeting, by the way, they attacked Malik Reddy, a member of our community, for being a member of Dream Defenders. They attacked Taylor Keita. Fraternal Order of Police did it. The police unions that pay John Daly and Diane William Cox specifically, the real people you work for, the real opinion you care about, because it's definitely not the community opinion that you're putting force and uplifting. And we can see that through your actions. The reason why people are frustrated, the reason why things like this keep on happening, where these city commissioner meetings come out of control, is because people are tired and upset at the lack of respect and especially the lack of action. The time for words is over. We need people power, not police power. We want the city commission to create a statement against House Bill 601 and Senate Bill 576, just like the conversation y'all had about the bill criminalizing homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Tavish Bryan. Tavish Bryan will be followed by Oliver Chees.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Tavish Bryan. I will not be giving my address. The city of Tallahassee needs people power, not police power. The people of the city cannot rely on TPD's own internal review to ensure our safety and the appropriate behavior of law enforcement. TPD's internal enforcement has consistently failed to hold officers accountable for misconduct. Any agency that has the power to detain, interrogate, arrest, and kill, amongst many other powers, should have the utmost scrutiny from all available eyes. The people on which TPD can and have enacted violence should be on the forefront of those who can hold officers accountable. And without a police review board, this is not possible. TPD's officers are frequently involved in inappropriate uses of force and wrongful death cases. And what are we left to do without a citizen police review board? This community is at risk of losing its jurisdiction over its own police department, a community review board that has already lost the ability to engage in community outreach, issue press releases, create public statements, and review the budgets, contracts, and collective bargaining agreements of TPD. These bills stand to completely strip the community from any meaningful way to hold TPD accountable for its misconduct. We will be left vulnerable to the violence of policing. For this, we should all oppose HB 601 and SB 576, sorry. Please oppose these bills. People power, not police power. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Oliver Chees.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Oliver Chees, and I will not be giving you my address. It's made blatantly clear over the past few months, and indeed, over the past few years, the city of Tallahassee is not willing to do what needs to be done in order to heal the relationship between the police of this city and the people. In fact, they've taken decisions that have actively put the police against the very community that they're supposed to protect and serve by allowing mismanagement, corruption, and a bad internal culture, which rewards abuses of power at every single level in our police department. The names of those killer cops guilty of the murder of innocents have not yet been released, because the city of Tallahassee and the TPD have chosen to shield murderers from justice instead of allowing the community to heal from these horrific crimes. The city of Tallahassee has stood time and time again on the side of police abuses of power, in the face of the righteous anger of the community members who they have hurt and the communities that they have let down in failing to carry out their duty as law enforcement. The solution is not to then give TPD itself more power over enforcing its own law, enforcing its own dictates, allowing it to investigate themselves and find that they did nothing wrong. The solution is building a strong civilian police review board in which the community is able to control the people who are supposed to be protecting them. The police are supposed to act as an arm, as an extension of the community, as an extension of the city itself. Instead, they and the government who back them have been waging war on our city and our people. And right now, they're on the verge of victory. If this body here does not pass a resolution condemning, or make a statement condemning House Bill 601 and Senate Bill 576, more than ever, Tallahassee needs to stand up against the corrupt police lobby, against the fraternal order of police, and against these interests who are pushing our city further and further into a deeply anti-people politics. We need people power, not police power. We cannot allow ourselves to fall into police autocracy. Are you on my time?
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
I have no additional speakers at this time, Mayor.
Okay. Go to commission discussion. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few items. I'll start by saying I support home rule. I oppose Senate Bill 576 and House Bill 601. And I agree that accountability on every level of government is important, but especially when people's lives are at stake. And I was proud to oppose when we stripped certain responsibilities and actions of the police review board. I think that was a mistake. But as far as supporting home rule, almost any time the legislature is taking power away from cities and local governments, I'll be opposing that. I did have one item. I wanted to ask about, Madam City Manager, in September, we voted to bring back an item exploring the West End District placemaking, the Pensacola Street concerns. This was separate from the law enforcement conversations that we're having and specific to what placemaking efforts or, you know, a district. Is that something that's gonna come back to us soon?
While you are identifying who's working on this, you wanna, I know you've been spearheading as well. Where are we with that process, Commissioner Williams-Cox? And then let's figure out when it's coming back as well.
Yeah, I do know that we're still working on the issues related to law enforcement, litter. Yeah, I do know that we're still working on the issues related to law enforcement, litter, and some of those issues. I'll have to get a staff update on the when it's coming. Can you come up?
Commissioner Williams Cox.
I would just, Deputy City Manager would know better, but in my conversations with the City Manager and the Deputy City Manager, they have been in conversations with the business owners there. And they're working on some solutions. I'm not privy to say what they all are because I don't know yet. I was anticipating when they bring their report back, we will all be made known. But I do know that they have been working with the folks in the area. And of course, the Sheriff's Office and the law enforcement piece was a large part of what was being asked for in the first place. They weren't asking necessarily for placemaking, they were asking for some relief. And I think that some of that is happening because I've not had any calls from the business owners or they've not come to meetings either.
And I met two days ago with Shinkton Lamy from the county because they are also working, we're coordinating on our efforts there and working with PD to look at the trends and the changes and decreases in trend. As you know, we've designated a person to work with the homeless community in that area and making sure that we address some of the concerns about litter. And we are monitoring those trends, but I do not have a specific date on the placemaking, Commissioner, but I will get that for you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
And next, some of this was kind of played out today on a somewhat related note with the canopy development, seeing how expensive development is between increases in construction costs, insurance, parking requirements, and ending parking requirements is something that is being implemented and discussed across the country as a way to make development more affordable across the board. And I was wondering, I wanted to make a motion to have staff bring back an item with, an informational item with background and an overview of ending parking minimum mandates, what this is looking like across the country and especially in Florida. I believe there may have been legislation actually filed related to this and included in that, what steps, you know, what would it look like if we were to pursue something like that? I want to begin that conversation, so that is my motion.
Motion's on the table by Commissioner Porter to revisit parking minimums within the city limits of the City of Tallahassee and to bring back options on how to move forward in this community. Your second to the motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Matlow. Any further conversation? Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think we brought this up over the course of years. Just when we think of transportation and the burden it puts on, you know, new growth and development, I think it is a crucial piece. And as we explore the concept, I think there is actually zones within the city already that we don't necessarily require the parking requirements as others. So we can look at the impact and how that has been beneficial to different areas as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I will support the motion on the table. I have been stating since I've been an elected official for 16 years that we shouldn't have parking minimums and it's time to move forward. I look forward to reviewing this. All those in favor of the motion to bring an item back, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passage of name, 50. Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
Thank you. That's all for me.
Okay, Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the police review board policy, have we worked with our lobbyists? Has the Florida League of Cities taken a position on that with, as far as home rule authority?
Dr. Whitley, if you want to come join us. I don't, I'm not sure, Commissioner Matlow. I would assume that, as Commissioner Porter said, anything that chips away at home rule authority, they're probably in opposition. I don't personally notice that. Diane, did they talk about it at the board meeting?
Bigger fish to fry, to be honest, because there's so, such quagmire with what's already in legislation about what can and cannot be done with the officer's bill of rights. So as far as the League of Cities, even when they gave us our update at the retreat and even when they've had their day at the Capitol, they're busy trying to preserve home rule, but there's only so much that they can do. So that has not come up.
Dr. Whitley, have you had any formal messages from the League, or more importantly, from our lobbyists on the status of this piece of legislation?
So, thank you, Mayor. And Commissioner, you're right. And Commissioner Porter, you said it's a home rule issue here, of course, that the League would take. I do think the League has taken a stance in opposition to this bill. What the bill does is, or what the bill lays out is a legislative intent to ensure that the process for receiving, processing, and investigating complaints against officers is applied uniformly throughout the state. And then also specifies that any political subdivision, which would include municipalities, may not adopt or attempt to enforce any ordinance than in this instance would, relating to civilian oversight of law enforcement agencies, investigations of complaints of misconduct, conduct by officers. Actually, this morning, spoke with both the attorney and the Inspector General about this, about the potential impacts. I will say that the Senate version was not agended for the Rules Committee meeting tomorrow morning. That probably is favorable. There is some question outstanding about whether, and if so, how the language in the bill would actually affect what we have here in Tallahassee. We were named, along with a number of other cities, in staff analysis as examples of cities that do have boards of this nature. So there's still some questions on whether it really actually would impact our board. We're talking with the attorney and the Inspector General about that. But I would say it not being on the Rules Committee for their meeting tomorrow morning would be a sign that it's beginning to stall out.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor, if I could point that there's been continuous misinformation about how current the board is here in the city and what they've been stripped of. They were not stripped of anything. They've never had the authority to do those things. And we had to go back and make it clear because, you know, we didn't say you don't do it because we didn't think we needed to because no other boards or advisory groups were doing it and because they were created by the City of Tallahassee. And they were subject to the City of Tallahassee policies and rules like all the other boards. And so they were not stripped of anything. It was just made clear because this board needed that clearance. Other boards did not need the clearance that they were not supposed to be doing press releases. And there were a number of other things in there that we just put in to clarify. Since it didn't say it, it was silent because we thought, you know, you knew, so it had to be clarified. So it wasn't that anything was stripped from them. It was just made clear because it needed to be made clear in this particular board as opposed to any of the other boards.
This on point where Commissioner Matlow still has the floor.
Oh.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the update. It sounds like the Florida League of Cities on the home rule point is likely opposing it. And so I obviously oppose it. The government closest to the people knows what's best and is more in tune with what our communities need, particularly in sensitive matters of police enforcement and making sure we have a good relationship in our community. The second item I wanted to bring up was, and I don't think Mr. James Barnes is here, but I did want to thank him for handling the unfortunate situation with the utility disconnect of eight cents that we saw in the paper. Is he? There he is. I see his hand. Oh, thank you, Mr. Barnes. You acted very swiftly to correct that situation and represented the city to make sure we got it done quickly. Since then, in the article, there's been an op-ed and we've seen a few other individuals come forward of maybe being disconnected for a low dollar amount, under, maybe not eight cents, but under $25 and how it affected, you know, their families or their parents. It may just be a handful, I'm not really sure. But it was mentioned that the City of Tavoris actually has an ordinance, I guess, in place to make sure disconnects don't happen if it's under $25.
Mr. Barnes, could you please?
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Barnes, come on up. Commissioner Matlow, we actually have that program in place.
We do.
We do. Mr. Barnes, we've had it in place for quite some time.
Hello, Mayor, Commissioners, appointed officials. We have several provisions that if individuals short pay, that we will be able to minimize the impact that that doesn't happen. The case that was reported in the newspaper was an anomaly, as I stated. It was one because we extended a pay plan that wasn't honored and the system got confused and issued the disconnect order. It also happened at a time where we suspended non-payment because of the cold weather. It was like a week in the twenties and thirties. So the perfect storm of a lot of conditions came about, but we did remediate it as quickly as we can. But in an everyday situation of a customer who was making payments and happened to pay short, that would not happen.
Mr. Barnes, how many accounts do we have?
126,000 approximate electric customer accounts. I won't go on the number of water, gas, and sewer customers.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm aware of a lot of the programs that we do. And I do, we go overboard to make sure we work with people on set up payment plans. I guess my question is, do we have a dollar amount limit such as if you owe less than $25, you won't be disconnected? Without having, just on the computer side, without having to call in, without having to have a special payment plan? Do we have just a limit of, hey, if it's less than 25 bucks, if it's less than $50, you just won't be disconnected as a policy?
We have provisions in place through our billing engine that will not allow folks who, maybe by confusion, to pay less and not be connected. The anomalies of what you hear of 50 cents, a dollar, $5, that's just not what we stand for because that's not the direction that we've been given. So the answer to your question is yes, we do, Commissioner. We have provisions in place.
If someone owes $15 on the utility bill, they underpaid or had a small bill, and don't reach out to community service, and that passes the 60-day late charge, will they be disconnected or by nature of it being a low balance, will there not be a disconnect?
There would not be a disconnection for $15. No, sir, it would not.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Mr. Barnes, I got to tell you, you probably have one of the hardest jobs in the City of Tallahassee. And I want you to know that I understand that when we have over 120,000 accounts, mistakes are going to happen, unfortunately, one ended up in the news. But I think you handled it perfectly. You know, part of leadership is stepping up to the plate, saying we made a mistake, correcting it immediately, and then trying to ensure with your leadership team that moving forward, we try to avoid these mistakes as much as possible. With that, I am extremely appreciative. You have always had one of the best customer service attitudes in the City of Tallahassee. And you got a tough job when it comes to people's utilities. But the programs that you have had in place for years, long before I was mayor of the City of Tallahassee, to try to avoid the shut offs have served us well. But yes, when you have over 120,000 accounts every now and then, we're going to have some mistakes. And I'd rather have nobody else in that position to address it. Appreciate it. Mayor, I'm on point for comment.
Thank you.
And then, Commissioner Matlow, you still have the floor.
Yeah, this is just on point. And, you know, we tend to forget, and it hasn't been that long ago, that we were going through this pandemic called COVID and what we did to protect individuals even then, when it wasn't cold. It was the summer. It was whatever part of the year it was, but we made sure that no one's utilities were disconnected during that unfortunate time period. And I read that op-ed, and the one thing that concerned me was that it talked about comments that were made on the Tallahassee Democrat page, but none of us know what the circumstances of those were. So I wouldn't automatically assume, because people made those comments, that it was a similar or the same type of situation that happened with the young lady that was reported on. So, and again, like you, Mr. Mayor, and as a matter of fact, a lot of these provisions, you all, for those of you who might not have been around or might have forgotten, our city manager was head of the department at one point that put a lot of these provisions in place.
Heard about a deputy city manager.
Right. So just, he's aware. And I'm sure that he has gone through this kind of situation as well and is on top of the mechanisms that you all currently have to go through. But as a commission, I'm sure, I speak for my colleagues and the mayor, that that's not something that we would typically find in 120-some thousand accounts. And, Mr. Barnes, I have all due respect for you and your staff and the work that you do. And I just have to believe that there is no way that you would consciously have something like this happen to a utility customer in the City of Tallahassee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
One more thing on point. Next to your job being so difficult, technology and innovation job is almost as difficult because they're the ones who have to maintain these systems. Having been one who wrote programs, you can only write programs to catch situations that you are aware of. And so this one fell out of the regular cycle. And I'm just telling you from my experience, this was an exception. And now that you know what the exception is, now technology and innovation and whoever the vendor is will now go back and patch this program to help catch that particular situation. You caught all the other hundred, but this one got by and got attention. So now this one will be patched up as what we used to call it, maintained, upgraded, to prevent this from happening in the future. So you have a great partner. I don't know if Tim is in here somewhere. Okay. So when it happened, somebody said the system did it. He sat up, I'm sure, in the middle of the night, tried to figure out what happened. And once they figured out what happened, and you all worked together on it. So it was a team, I believe it was a team effort to make sure that this doesn't happen to anyone else. So I'm very proud of what you all did, but I want to make sure you understood because I understand that when these things happen, these push-button systems, you can only do what the human being thought somebody might, the mistake that someone might make. So now we've got that one plugged, and the next time somebody does something that we didn't think of, we'll plug that one as well. So it's a work in progress.
Commissioner Matlow, this was a long, roundabout way to get back to you. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Appreciate you.
The last issue, and I may touch on comments that were made earlier in regards to getting the information we need from city management. And Cynthia, I'll ask you the questions, you know, Reese isn't here, but just from a management perspective, on January 23rd, I sent an email to the city manager requesting a copy of a firefighter safety pamphlet that was created. I didn't receive a copy of it till February 5th, almost two weeks later. This was a safety prevention flyer that also had firefighter recruitment on it that spoke to its competitive benefits. You know, I heard some troubling allegations that it was said that the flyer wouldn't run in utility bills until the union had a contract executed. And I could see why recruiting for competitive pay would not be a good message to send to the community with ongoing information. But I'm very troubled that it took me nearly two weeks to even get a copy of it or a response from management. And while I was waiting for a response from management, it came to my attention that public resources were being used to interrogate city employees to find out who gave me the information that it existed. This witch hunt took place, which I'm struggling to know what the public purpose was. And my question for management, Cynthia, is, is it city management's position that employees not share information, public information with city commissioners?
So let me take first stab, and then I'm coming to you on this one as well. You're filling in for the manager today. I get that. First of all, Commissioner Matlow, I would warn you and all of our colleagues to be very careful of taking any accusations as facts and making sure that we sit down and we, as the electeds, when we hear things, take into consideration all context and make sure that they're accurate. Because as we know as elected officials, there's a lot of things that are said that are not fact. I do know, and again, I'll let the manager talk, I do know that it's important for us to follow the non-interference clause and not get involved with the day-to-day actions, whether it's as simple as a utility insert or whether it's the day-to-day operations of the Sewer Department or the underground, other aspects of underground utilities or public information. There is a reason why we have these clauses in our charter to make sure that we can have the smooth flow of government.
But, Mr. Mayor, on point, the charter dictates we should get that information from city employees.
I'm getting there. Hold on just a second. So when we have the non- So when we have the non-interference clause, what that does is that creates a scenario to be able to work with management to figure out what is the appropriate way to get information. I tell you what is not appropriate is for you to receive information from city employees that is not shared with everyone. That's why the flow of information should always come through before appointed so that it is then evenly distributed to all members of the commission. I don't think anybody would put up having one commissioner having information above and beyond the others. So with that, Madam Manager, please comment from the management side.
So I believe the question was whether or not we had an expectation that employees didn't speak with commissioners. Is that what you, is that what you're asking?
To share information with commissioners based on the performance of the city manager's purview?
Officially, I expect for employees to share information with us and with their management team. And oftentimes, as in this case, the information that received is not accurate, and it costs us a lot of time to do the research and to get the correct message out again. So I'm not clear about what exactly you are speaking of, but certainly, those employees work for us. City manager work for you all.
That's right.
And so individual employees working below the manager should be working through their management team.
That's right.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe you're making my point for me. I asked the city manager for information about something I heard for him to clarify. For 14 days, I did not receive a response. It's more important to find out where the information was coming from than it was to let an elected official know what was going on. And to your point about sharing information amongst all commissioners, I agree with you, and that's not happening. The city manager sends emails to three commissioners that he doesn't share with other commissioners. That's not an appropriate way to manage a government. But I'm going to leave it at this, there's no public purpose to go after somebody, to try to identify somebody for doing something that is their right. There's no wrongdoing at all. There's no information that happens in the city government that should be excluded from city commissioners. There's just not. There's not information that should be hidden. And to your charter point, and I'll read directly from the charter, Mr. Mayor, "Any member of the city commission or thereof may at any time request information from any employee of the city relating to the performance of the appointed official's duties of the office's operation." So not only is it not an interference, it's a prescribed duty of the city commission to be able to ask employees about the functions of our government. We have a overarching responsibility of oversight, and I get very troubled if there's any indication that anyone would be retaliated against or fear for their employment based on information that is open to the public. They're all public records anyway. So I'll follow up on some of the other items, because I am very concerned about information not being shared with other commissioners. And Reese isn't here today, but I'll bring that to our next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, you're welcome. The accusations that there's a witch hunt, I am not aware of this, and I don't think any of us would put up with this, including the manager.
Or retaliation.
Right. And I understand, just because someone might bring your attention, their opinion does not make it fact. And so it's important that we have a operational system to make sure that the true, I'm seeing the city attorney, not her head in agreement, we need to make sure that there is a process in place of public information dissemination to the elected officials, so not one person is receiving misinformation that could be interpreted as accurate information. Commissioner Williams-Cox, you have the floor.
Well, it's news to me that three commissioners are receiving information and others don't. Like, I say this all the time, because I do take my briefings, so if that's how it's happening, then that's not my fault. I made way to get my information. Deputy city manager, I understand that there was an incident that occurred last week, I believe it was, where there was a commissioner from our sister government who trespassed on city property. And I saw the video, so I know it happened. It's not out there anymore. But I'm just concerned about what are we doing about that? Because if a regular citizen had done that, that regular citizen would be in a whole lot of trouble. I don't want to believe that there are some who are above the law in our city. And this was a county commissioner. It wasn't even a city commissioner who climbed the fence, although I understand from the video that there was a city commissioner on site. So I'm, you know, I'd like to get, I'd like to make the motion that we get an agenda item back to determine what happens in situations like this, and what should we be, what should we be doing about that? Because if a regular citizen had done that, they would have been arrested. So I'm just trying to understand why or how that occurs, and what should we be doing about it? So I'm asking that an agenda item comes back to inform me on what actually happened and what's going to happen as a result of that. Because we need to send a message.
I will second the motion. I was totally disturbed to hear about Commissioner O'Keefe's actions of jumping the fence. My understanding that is a felony action, and we don't do that. We don't do that. I have not talked to the commissioner, because I assume it's being investigated. I don't know, and it wouldn't be appropriate. But I am very upset and disturbed. This is, seems to be appropriate action, to jump fences, trespass, make political statements and points, especially when the act of doing so is, I believe, a felony. So I will second the motion to have the incident report brought back so that we completely understand what exactly did happen aside what he posted on video.
I'd like to, just on point, Mr. Mayor, just how this has evolved from that incident.
Where are we?
Where are we?
What is it?
And I can say, Mr. Mayor, that every county commissioner who has reached out to me or that I've reached out to was very disturbed by it and know that wanted us to understand that this is not what they do. And so some have even gone so far as to apologize. But of course, I've not heard from Commissioner O'Keefe, but I just, I just need to know because if Johnny did this, Johnny would have been arrested. And so we need to make sure that we let folks know that no one is above the law.
Well, and it's an active construction site. I mean, there's safety issues in place. That is since why it's posted, no trespassing. Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little shocked. I'll just say, per the conversation we just had, I mean, I think that I feel comfortable with the process playing itself out like it usually would with TPD handling this and management handling it. So for that reason, I don't feel comfortable supporting this motion.
Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would just caution this body to tread carefully. We are not law enforcement. If there's an active investigation, it would certainly seem improper and meddling at an elected level to ask for enforcement or seek additional enforcement. You know, we empower law enforcement to do the job at whatever's in their disposal, particularly when we start looking at political opponents. I'm getting, this is getting very troubling in how any type of elected body should operate. I'm not in favor of bringing items before this commission to direct individual law enforcement's actions against anybody. Looking at national politics, there's lots of reasons why, so I'm in opposition. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. I'm going to support the motion on the table, because it is not uncommon to do after-action incident reports when incidents like this do take place. If anything for our own benefit, to be able to provide the safety of the construction workers and the team that is out there. Now, if the recommendation comes back, and I don't know, if it comes back and there is a full investigation going on, that might be what you get, Commissioner, is there's a full investigation going on, and you do not need to discuss this, boom, end of point.
Right.
If that's the case, I still want it to come back and let that be stated for the record, and we'll go from there.
And as a point of clarification, I didn't ask the law enforcement to do anything. I asked for an agenda item to come back to give, to let us know what happened, what transpired, and what was, what was action being taken. I've not asked the law enforcement to do anything.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Matlow?
Just for clarity, I'm not sure we're saying the same things. Are you saying there's been an investigation, and it's completed, and you want an update? Or is there an active investigation into this incident that we're attempting to interfere in?
I have no idea. I have no idea.
That would be a great conversation for a briefing, Mr. Mayor.
I just saw a county commissioner post on video that they jumped the fence of no trespass city property. Definitely.
And I saw a picture, and I saw a picture of you, Commissioner Matlow, with this individual next to the no trespassing site.
And let's talk about, so the incident in place is dozens and dozens of trees were being cut down. My involvement, Ms. Williams-Cox, you know, and my actions are all on video, but what we saw was a true slap in the face to the community, where management was on TV that morning, saying they were going to work with the community at the same time that trees were coming down. So if you're asking about my involvement that day, you brought my name up.
Well, I brought your name up.
This is why legal issues should not accompany the dice.
At least I'll bring your name up, bring my name up to the Democrat and question my appointment.
Mr. Mayor, do we follow Robert's rules of order?
Let's bring this back down.
Don't go down.
Stanley, give me two. We got a motion on table. Take the vote, let's move on. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those pose?
Nay.
Passes three, two, with Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Porter in dissent. You have the floor, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for supporting it. I would like to know that information. And again, I want to thank you all for supporting the Arumbe. And it is Black History Month, and there are a lot of things that are going on this year, this month. A lot of it has to do with the bicentennial, and I'm hoping that this, I'm going to take this as an opportunity to learn some things that I have not learned, that I did not know about Black History. We had Commissioner Richardson, I attended today the Voting Rights Act across the street that's being sponsored by Senator Thompson, Jermaine Thompson, and Representative Bracy Davis, and it is called the Harry T. and Harriet Moore Voting Rights Act. And for those of you who don't know who those individuals are, they were killed on Christmas Day in their home on their anniversary. He died that night, she died nine days later, all because they were trying to get people registered to vote and because of their activism. So learn our history, so that we can know more about how things came to be. And so Happy Black History Month to everybody, because Black History is American history. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I would like to announce, I serve on the Swanee River Area Council, Boy Scouts of America, and we are celebrating our 100th year anniversary of scouting in America, our centennial. And I have been asked by staff from the Boy Scouts if we would certainly, of course, I said yes, sponsor a proclamation recognizing that fact, that centennial of scouting in America. And so they will provide us the language, Mr. Mayor, and I'll do that to you at the appropriate time. That's all I have.
Excellent. So, Madam Manager, we have done a wonderful job today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We had a great workshop on the budget, we had a great meeting tonight. Appreciate your dedication. We stand adjourned.